Prior to the pandemic hitting, which just happened to be, I'd like to tell you, I knew that was going to happen, but it didn't. I obviously did not. But it sure created quite a bit of good luck for the City of Johnston regarding rates. We've received very favorable interest rates. And we normally would have issued that debt in the fall. And we know right now that the rates are really, really bad. And cities are rejecting bond, bond sales that they're having. And they're trying to place them individually with banks now trying to get better rates. What that did though, caused us to have to amend the budget to move up those 2021 CIP items to the end of the 2020 budget. And it didn't make any difference on the debt service levy that we were going to charge. It didn't make any difference on the budget you had already certified. It strictly was because of cash, the need for cash and the number of projects we have going on in our community. You, as Matt has already told you, you see how far we're moving and how quickly we're moving on Northwest 54th Reconstruction. How quickly the intersection at 62nd and Merle Hay is going. All of those projects require some cash. Pioneer Parkway needs some cash. So we had to do those now versus waiting till the fall because I just needed the money. So all of that then created what would almost be shocking to most people, but an increase of budgeted revenues of 20.8 million, 20 million 800,000 in revenue and 28.9 million in expenses. You have to remember or realize please that over 18 million of that is the debt that I've been talking about. And over 7.2, 7.3 are those capital projects. So nothing horrendous in the rest of the budget. You'll, you can, you will see projects that we had tried to get in. Two years ago, we had the water sewer parks building that was supposed to have the building bays built into that building. You know, that project finally got done. Well, it was never in the right year of budget. We've had to put it in this year's budget, but we had the cash. So although it looks like you're spending now eight million more than you took in and we're decreasing our ending balance, if you'll notice, we're still going to end with a very healthy projected ending balance of 41 million. And we started at a balance of 49 million. When all of that, when we talk about a capital budget, that's anywhere between 15 and 27 million. That's really pretty good, pretty good guess and pretty good timing, I guess, when I've got to try to figure out where we're going to be on a capital project. So that's what tends to sway most of my end of the year stuff when it comes to that. But anyway, this is the, I included in the packet for you, the actual notice or the resolution of the hearing. The hearing was in the paper. I didn't receive any comments from the public or any questions from the public. I had separate sheets for each of the program areas, Public Works, Public Safety, Health and Social Services, explaining to you what the changes in their budget amendment was, why it was occurring. And then the same with revenues and the revenue source. So I'll ask if there are any questions for you, from you at this time.
Does the council have any questions for Teresa?
Teresa, this is Councilman Coke. I wonder if it might be possible to circulate with us afterwards, maybe kind of what the revised capital improvement plan looks like based on, you know, sort of the shifting of the years. It's, first of all, it's always helpful to, it's sort of amazing, a month or two after you approve a capital improvements plan, keeping, remembering all the projects we funded or are planning on doing. So seeing it again isn't a bad thing, but if you could just maybe in an email circulate that to us, I'd really appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. And it is out on board docs in the library under the budget. And we didn't really move any projects around, Councilman Coke. Instead, if you look at, we tried to add that year, if you remember, we added the construction year. Cindy, if you would like to open up the adopted 2021 budget, yeah. And then if you could open section four for me. Go down. Okay, so if you looked at column where it says 21, 20A in FY21. So it says FY21, 2020A. It really turned out to be 2020C because we were still, we ended up doing it in 2020A. But instead, we did change the date when we were doing this CIB clear pack when. But those projects were for fiscal year 2021. So we didn't really move the fiscal year. And then if you went down and further into the detail of the CIP, some of those pages then, like the parks one is a good example. Or streets, I think streets might be first. I can't remember what's first. Okay, well, just stop right there Cindy, excuse me, sorry. Can you scroll up a second? Oh no, that's not the one I want, sorry. I bet you wish I was controlling it, huh? Okay, so if you look here, go back up one more, just in Sanitary Sewer, just to show you what I'm talking about. Where we talk about fiscal year FY21 on the second line down, it really is construction year 2020, Tom. So we knew that. And originally, when we did this, we did think we were going to issue that debt in August 2020. Then up to that front page, we moved it up to March 2020. So projects necessarily didn't move, but I didn't move the time that I borrowed it.
Okay, I think I got confused a little bit by looking at one of the documents and 86th Street Trail. It's made a reference between the project being pushed out. But that's being pushed out not based on this decision, but a different decision.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, okay, so that's, so I'm good.
Yeah, that was, that was moved out because of that, so. Any other questions?
But it wasn't moved out based on the action we're doing tonight.
No.
Right, right, okay.
No, right. Are there any other questions?
This is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Do we have anyone Cindy?
We do not.
If there are no other questions, we will close the public hearing then. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 2020-113?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5C, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 20-122, granting a gas easement to Mid-American Energy within Outlet Z, Lot 4 and Lot 5 of Johnson Town Center. We will open this public hearing at 7:17. And.
This is Dave Warding. I'll handle this one. And Cindy, if you wouldn't mind opening the easement and going to the last page. We obviously need gas line service to the new city hall building. As we worked through the final plat, we did not have that routing known for sure. And so no easements were set aside specifically for gas to serve city hall during that time. And so this request is from Mid-American to provide an easement across, basically from Merle Hay Road and across the adjacent to where the commercial buildings would be, underneath the sidewalk along the yard and get back to the city hall building, which is on what's labeled as Lot 5 there. Given it's a real estate item, it does require a public hearing. And that's what we're bringing before you tonight to grant this easement to Mid-American. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for David? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Do we have anyone Cindy?
I see none.
Okay. If there are no questions, we will close this public hearing then at 7:18. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-122?
So moved, Coke.
I move. I second Suresh.
We have a motion and a second Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 5D, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 20-120, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Johnston and All-Star Concrete LLC. We'll open this public hearing at 7:19.
Thank you, Mary. There's a group of investors that have acquired the four lots just north of the Casey's there on Johnston Drive. One of those investors is the owner of All-Star Concrete, currently located in Ankeny. They're proposing construction of a $1.7 million building, approximately 13,700 square feet that would house their facilities, their office, as well as their shop building for their concrete business. That will occupy two of the lots. And then there are two additional remaining lots that they intend to construct, speculative building at some point in the future. This development agreement just clears the construction of this initial building. Through the agreement, they would create and retain 70 jobs by five-year agreements. And the city would provide them the base TIF incentive of a five-year 50%, in this case forgivable loan. 20% of that loan being forgiven annually until completely forgiven. The ultimate amount of the loan would be subject to the final assessed value, which we'll know hopefully by the end of this year or early next year when they complete the building. Project is within our East Central Urban Renewal Area. We have the funds available through development agreement provision in the urban renewal plan and has been in front of the Ad Hoc Economic Development Committee. No comments received from the public prior to this meeting. A public notice was put into my register. And the Ankeny, City of Ankeny has signed off for fair play agreements on this relocation as well. Happy to answer any questions that there might be.
Does the council have any questions for Adam?
Adam, this is Suresh. What are the different businesses, you said they're going to build up there? What are the different businesses you said?
The only one we know right now is All-Star Concrete, which is a concrete operator out of Ankeny. They do intend to put up a second building at some point in the future. And that would be speculative in nature at this point, so we don't know who those potential tenants would be.
Okay.
Other questions for Adam? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Cindy, do we have anyone?
I see no one.
Then we will close the public hearing at 7:22. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-120?
So moved, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mary, I have just a quick question about the consent agenda item. So it's item, item O, it's the Iowa Center for Economic Success. So I just wanted an update maybe from Adam real quickly on are we aware? And I think the deadline is Wednesday night at midnight. Are we aware, have we been notified yet of any businesses in Johnston that have applied for this funding?
Yeah, I was actually hoping to give a quick update during the staff comments, but I can do that now if you prefer. We'll hold off to the end of the meeting.
Either way, whatever.
Why don't we, why don't we wait for the staff comments? Let's, let's get a motion on the consent agenda.
Move approval, Coke.
I second Suresh.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, let's move to the non-consent agenda. Item 8A, consider resolution number 20-115, approving the contract agreement with Quarry Springs Outfitters LLC for the rental of kayaks and concessions at the 70th Avenue canoe access. Would this be John?
Yep, can everybody hear me? Good, all right. As you probably remember, at a previous council meeting over, I think we did it during a staff comments, we had the operator and owner of Quarry Springs Outfitters come in and gave a presentation on a potential rental business for kayaks at the access of 70th. And kind of the marching orders were to, to bring back a contract to the council to look at and review that would get this going so that we could potentially have business operating yet this summer. Greg got the contract back to me a little over a week ago. And we had a chance to run it past our city attorney. Tim had a chance to take a look at it. Both Jim and myself reviewed it and the park board did as well. And we had some comments and some suggestions that we sent back as far as the contract goes. And Greg did update those upon our request. And basically through the comments, we, we do have recommendations from, from everybody that they feel comfortable with this. Really about the only thing that we had some suggestions on the park board was, there was a little bit of concern with trash potentially from, from the concession. One of the things we did do is said that it had to be prepackaged food and drinks. So there was a little bit of concern there, but I think for this to work, I think that is, is a positive. But basically this would give Quarry Springs Outfitters the exclusive right to be able to rent kayaks at this site on 70th. And would also give them the opportunity upon city requests and approval to do some rentals up on Terra, especially for any type of events in the future. So Greg is on the line with us, so I will turn it over. Greg, if you have any additional comments in regards to the contract or if there's questions from the, from the council.
I am online. If anybody has any questions, I'm open.
I have a question. Would, so it sounds like you are going to serve packaged food. If we had a food truck vendor who also wanted to serve down there and they worked with the city to get permission, is there issue with, is there conflict there? Since your, your basic business is renting kayaks, not serving food.
All I'm going to have there is a, all I'm going to have there is an ice chest with some bottled water, maybe some energy drinks. And, you know, like granola bars or something. I'm not, I wouldn't have any problems whatsoever with a food truck being there at all.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilman Martin, you'll, you'll be able to get your tacos.
Yes.
Other questions for Greg or for John? Greg, I don't know that it says in the agreement here, but do you know when you might be starting?
We're ready to go right now. I'll leave it up to the city to decide when they feel you're ready for us to start. I can tell you that we have made plans and arrangements to wipe down the kayaks and the paddles and life vests with a disinfectant towel type of material. So if that's, you know, okay with you and that's where your, your, your thinking is, is going to be acceptable. Whenever you tell us you're ready for us to start, we are.
Yeah, and we did. Go ahead, Suresh.
So a quick question for Mr. Suresh. So when you're wiping out for the COVID-19, are you doing it every time? It's, it's once a day thing or it's every time it's been rented?
As soon as it comes, as soon as it comes back, we'll wipe it down and make it ready for the next customer.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
I was going to mention to the council, and Greg and I have already had some email conversations in regards to this. But due to COVID-19, our conservation corps was not able to form. So at this point, we have not had a chance to get the creek cleared of log jams and that. They're hoping by summer, they may be able to organize a staff team, but they're not sure. So one of the things I've requested Greg, and he said they would have done it anyways, is that make sure they float down and know if there's going to be any obstacles or anything like that to, to do that quite often, to, to make sure that a tree hasn't fallen across the creek or something like that.
We, we actually floated it on May 9th. And other than one fairly serious log jam that we had to portage around, and it was an easy portage because there was a sandbar right in the middle of the creek, the rest of it was clear. So we posted that on our website so that we could start informing people of what to expect. And we will regularly float the river so that we can inform people when they are renting kayaks, what to expect and where.
Well, I have noticed when I've been out on the trails, there's been a lot of activity on, on the creek. So I think people are excited about getting out there. And I think that, you know, you'll provide a great service for our residents and visitors in our community. So thank you.
Just the last question, based on the conversation about when to start. Will someone contact me as far as when the city will give approval for us to start?
I will touch base with you, Greg. I can't imagine that it won't be, my hope and goal is if everything is, is approved this evening with this, that we'll have you ready for this weekend. It sounds like it's going to be warm and quite honestly Beaver Creek is about the perfect stage right now to float.
Yeah, it's absolutely beautiful out there.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Greg or John? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-115?
Martin, so approved, so moved.
Second.
Suresh, I second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg. We look forward to seeing many other happy paddlers out on Beaver Creek soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8B, consider approval of change order number 4, 5, 6 and 7 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnson Town Center project.
Good evening, this is Dave Warding again. Just wanted to, we're kind of doing a little housekeeping here. A number of change orders have kind of been brewing for a little bit, a little while. And we're just getting caught up here on the Town Center City Hall project. I'm going to go through them all quickly. And if you have questions as I go, feel free to stop and ask. The first one, change order 4, relates to fiber conduit. The city fiber optic network is necessary to enter into the new city hall building. When we were designing the, the building, we didn't know exactly what that routing would be as we were still working through the design of Merle Hay and 62nd, trying to figure out where the best connection points would be. We also want a redundancy in that system. So what's proposed here is fiber that, or a conduit, excuse me, that would extend from the north side of city hall, westerly to Merle Hay Road. And a second one that would come out of the western side of city hall and extend southerly to Northwest 62nd Avenue. And so this would be the conduit that would support our fiber network. Actually, as part of the 62nd and Merle Hay project, the installation of the fiber would actually occur as part of that contract. So this would get, get the new city hall up and running between the two and get us up and running. This change order for that conduit is 54,236. And I should note, that does include, there's some economies of scale. It does include two fiber, or two, excuse me, two conduits along that 62nd to the north side of the building route that would support other providers, Century Link and MediaCom, for example, would be able to get into the city hall building without having to do any boring or otherwise conflict with other utilities on the site. So we're giving them a dedicated route to do that with this change order. Change order 5 relates to the city council chambers AV changes. It's hard to believe, but it's been two months ago that we met last in person. And at that time, we had a discussion about the audio visual system, camera system in the council chambers. Direction was provided by the council that evening to figure out a system that had better capabilities and functionality. At the time, we were looking at a one-camera system. We went back to the design team, I Meg in particular is a sub consultant that OPN has been working with, and asked for their feedback and suggestions on a type of system that would improve that functionality, yet still be easy to use from a user perspective. What they recommended was a five-camera system that would have an upgraded decoder to accommodate the number of cameras. And those cameras would be located, I'll go through them here quickly. One towards the back of the room that would provide a view of the entire council at the dais. One mounted above the podium, that would be a document camera. So you'd be able to see if someone had a map, for example, at the podium, we'd be able to display that from that document camera. One would be mounted behind the mayor, essentially behind the mayor from the ceiling. That would provide an entire view of the room and the entire crowd. Two cameras would be wall mounted on the east wall. One would kind of be above one of the TV monitors that would provide a camera angle back to the staff table. So if staff was presenting from the tables, that would be on the west wall, that camera would pick that angle up. And then a fifth one would be located on the east wall, kind of at the front of the room, up by the council dais, that would point directly at the, at the podium, so you'd be able to get the speaker. This system would operate with the same sort of user controls as the original system, which would be from a touch panel that would be located on the staff, the front staff table. And so that would allow us to switch at any time during the meeting, switch between camera views, display whatever's being displayed on the monitors within the council chambers, such as PowerPoint presentations or the agenda packet, those types of things. Easily could be done just with a touchscreen. It does not include the ability during the meeting for staff to pan tilt and zoom any of those cameras. That functionality would exist, but not live during a meeting. Would have to be done as part of the programming of the cameras. As before, the system would have the ability to record both audio and video to a hard disk and/or network, as well as live stream to a service such as YouTube Live. Cost for upgraded equipment, additional cameras, wiring, et cetera, is just under 39,000, 38,784. I know there's a lot of discussion about this system at the, the last discussion. And be happy to entertain any questions on that particular change order.
All right. I will just say that I appreciate what you've done here. And it sounds, it sounds very usable. And in my also understanding that we wouldn't need any additional staff. The staff we have would be able to control the cameras.
Correct. That was sort of the direction we, we provided them was we met with them the first time after the council meeting. Is there a way we can do this without needing this, a camera operator essentially? And this sounds like a pretty, a system they've used fairly often, not necessarily for council chambers necessarily, but it's a system they're very comfortable with and it's very user friendly. Again, from that touchpad that we're already going to have. Again, from that touch pad that we're already going to have there that would control the rest of the audio video in the room. So should be very user friendly from the way they described it.
Thank you.
Change order six, a small one, as we designed the furniture for City Hall, there were a few minor adjustments that needed to be made to the electrical, particularly the, in the three council, or excuse me, the three conference rooms. It's designed to have electrical, it comes out of the floor that provides data and power to the table itself. So you will have plugs in the table and network jacks and those types of things. We had to make some adjustments there and that required an adjustment of change order of $1,770, pretty small one. And then finally, change order seven, as we looked at the IT rack that was designed within the IT room and compared that with our existing and needed equipment for our needed equipment as a city, as well as all of the equipment that's needed to support the new building. It was determined that we needed to make some changes to that rack to accommodate all that equipment and that had a change of $1,540. Included with this, an owner contingency log that was provided by Hanson. As you recall, our owner contingency at the start of the project per our contract was 30 or $375,000. We have had, as with the changes tonight, seven different change orders that have, that have come out of that contingency. Also per our contract, any savings that have resulted of the project is, as a result of changes that we make, go into the owner contingency. And so we've got a number of those that have resulted in funds going back into the contingency. The generator, for example, came in under the allowance that was provided in the contract. We elected to do the lease purchase on the solar, which allowed all of, or most of what was originally allowed in that allowance to go back into the owner contingency. There was some electrical work that reduced that amount slightly. We elected to remove the soil, so the cells along the promenade. We removed the hotel paving, the parking lot paving had allowance of 379,000. In our, one of our other discussions, I think that was also on March, March 16th, was the removal of paving in the, particularly the northeast side of the site, quite a bit of parking and paving, that had a savings of $531,000. And so the result is, right now, we have a balance in our owner contingency of just under $1.7 million and anything that remains in this contingency at the completion of the project will be deducted from the overall project cost. So I'm happy to report we're seven months in roughly to construction and we're sitting at a almost $1.7 million contingency on the project. I would note, the one, there are a couple outstanding items that will be coming before you in the coming months. We're continuing to work on the changes to the ice rink and the site support building and the splash pad. We believe that'll have a deduction in the overall cost as well, switching to the synthetic ice. And we're also working on some changes to landscaping and removal of the two houses that were acquired after the contractors entered into with Hanson. That would be expenses that will come out of this contingency. Those are the, kind of the two areas where we still have some questions up in the airs to the status of needed change orders. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve change orders four, five, six and seven with Hanson JTC?
Martin, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second Cindy vote please.
Councillor McCope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item HC, consider resolution number 20-121, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Collection of Solid Waste between Metro Waste Authority and Ankeny Sanitation Inc. Is this you, Jim? Or whose item is this?
You're muted, Jim.
It's Jim's, but he's muted.
Jim, we can't hear you.
Okay, you got me now? I was trying to get fancy and look at the agenda item at the same time. So this is the, as the councils are aware, we are up against the ending of our contract with waste management for garbage hauling and the contract ended on, or will end on June 30, 2020. And so as we looked at our alternatives, we started to have a conversation with Metro Waste Authority to see about if they would be willing to manage our contract and work with us so that they would actually be, have the contract as opposed to the city. There's certainly the subject matter experts in this area across the metro and there's a lot of efficiencies with having them, working with them to be able to do the contract. So when we looked at our alternatives, this recommendation we got from our city attorney is that we do need to either rebid the contract as of June 30 or if we want to get into a contract for a short period of time while everything is getting prepared to do a competitive bid, that we could do that. And so the timing is such that we have the opportunity to get into a contract with three other communities, Bondurant, Norwalk, Windsor Heights, and all four communities, including Johnson, all four communities would become a bundle and eventually would be competitively bid, all of our communities together to, in the future. But right now, Metro Waste Authority is still working on, they have their recycling contracts and their yard waste contracts that they have to wait to get to the end of those contracts before they're going to be able to bundle with the four communities, which would include all three services, yard wastes, recycling and garbage collection. So this action is a resolution saying that we will become a party to do, with the hauler being sanitation and they would provide service to Johnston and the three other communities. And the intent is to bid the, all four communities and the services within the next year or so. And Councilman Pope had a question this afternoon on when that bid would actually occur and I wasn't sure at that time. I do know that Leslie Earlman, actually callback from Metro Waste Authority and I'm not sure if my company is joining this, but I did put that question to Leslie, when the contract would be bid for the competitive bid for the four communities. And so Leslie, do you have that information?
I do. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. So the initial term of the contract for the three communities that Jim just mentioned was a seven-year contract and it has three one-year extensions on it right now. And so the initial term of the contract as Johnson would join the existing contract as it is, would be a one-year extension and we would certainly work with the communities as we traditionally do to get feedback as far as if the hauler is meeting the city's needs operationally from, from the curb collecting the garbage as well as from a customer service perspective as well. And if all of that would align, we would likely look at being interested in doing one more one-year extension after that. So likely not taking advantage of the three one-year extensions that are available, but two one-year extensions, because just as Jim mentioned, it's the recycling contract that has two remaining years left on it. And so if we can get all communities whose contracts that Metro Waste Authority manages to the same point, we can really have a very unique perspective that we've never had before in this region to look at how exactly our ultimate efficiency, which is not only tied with bundling communities together so that we can reach around 14,000 to 16,000 households, which we know is an optimal point of price per household for collection, but then also through feedback that we've received from haulers is that another step that we could take to be even more efficient in our collection practices is if we were to bundle the yard waste, garbage and recycling services together. They'll oversee three, three bundles of separate community pairings, but putting one hauler in, assigning one hauler per contract would allow for some efficiencies that we would be eager to further explore through the preparatory RFP process. So that's probably a little longer answer than what you were anticipating.
No, that's fine. Appreciate that. And the other thing I did provide to the council was the current contract that Metro Waste Authority has with Ankeny Sanitation. The contract is very similar to the contract that we currently have with waste management. Actually, when we did the waste management contract, I reached out to Metro Waste Authority and, and they were very helpful in helping me put a contract together that would be very consistent with other contracts in the metro and enable us to get to this point where we would be able to work together across several cities to get as efficient service as possible. The other thing with this change, the rate that is charged to our citizens would remain the same that it currently is at $8.34 per household per month for the 96 gallon container. So that's, so there wouldn't be a rate increase this year and then future rate increase would be based on capital, or excuse me, price index and the fuel rates as well as tipping fees out of the landfill. So with that, I would answer any question the council may have.
Any questions for council members?
Well, this is Councilman Pope. The reason, I had some initial concerns or kind of questions about why we were doing this and it seemed to me, we could have opened ourselves up potentially to criticism that while we were being guided to do a competitive bid, we were not doing a competitive bid. We were in essence, sort of going a different approach that was not a competitive bid process. But, but after kind of getting a better understanding of the, the ability to pull together the yard waste, the recycling and the regular trash, that makes sense to me. And so I'm now comfortable with doing, doing a contract with the potential of the two-year extensions as outlined by, by Metro Waste.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-121?
So moved, Evans.
Second, Pope.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councillor Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Pope? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,621,328. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Pope.
Evans, second.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Evans? Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. Jim, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
I've got a couple things. I think, Adam, were you going to follow up on one issue?
Yes, whenever you're done.
Why don't you go ahead and then I'll finish up with my items.
Sure. So a quick update for you on the business grant program related to COVID-19. Application window opened up on May 8th. It was anticipated to close on the 20th. I did speak with the Greater Des Moines Partnership early this evening. They've indicated that we have nine applications within Johnston right now. They've received just over 200 as of a few days ago across the metro. So the numbers are a little less than I think we were initially anticipating. Now, they had tried to restrict out the number and the types of businesses that could apply. I think it might be overwhelmed and uncertainty related to the amount of private funding we had at the time. So their suggestion at this point is to push that deadline back to the 28th and to include professional service industries within the qualified types of businesses that could apply now as well. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and if there are any concerns with that, we can pass that along to them. But that's where things stand as of today. There are nine Johnston businesses that have applied and from my understanding, most of all those have been qualified. We fielded a few, a few questions, so I think there's another one or two applications that should be cycling in and the mayor and Janet have done some promotional material on this as well as Jetco in the chamber several times. So we're fairly confident the word's getting out there. The PPP round two funding came out, I believe, the same day as the application window opened up. We have been discouraging folks that they were receiving PPP money from applying to this, at least letting them know that they'd be down on the priority list a little bit as well. So we've heard a good number of businesses have been funded through that, as well as about a half dozen of businesses now in Johnston through the IEVA loan program. So I guess it's, in a way, it's kind of good to hear that we haven't had overwhelming amounts of applications at this point, but we have had a number at this point and expect to get a couple more at least.
So Adam, in terms of professional service firms, you're talking about like architect, engineer, law offices, that's what it's like?
Businesses we talked about and the qualification on that is they would need to have a commercial office space, they couldn't be operating out of their house. So that would be one additional restriction placed on those types of businesses.
It will be possible, once this closes, to just to get a list of the folks who applied for both this program and also the businesses that applied for the IEVA program from Johnston.
Sure. I did send you over that list and I'm happy to provide it to anybody else in the council that's interested in looking at that. The IEVA list is a little bit more difficult to filter through.
Yeah, the IEVA list is, if you send us the whole list, don't do that. That's not, because it's like about Polk County, it's the LLC. So if there's no way, if there's any way we could break that down, and I don't want you to go to a lot of work, but if there's a way, if somebody's got an easy, you know...
I'm not sure if Phil's still on the call, but Phil, maybe you can chime in here if Cindy could open it up. I know you've been tracking that fairly closely recently.
I can, can you hear me okay? I would just add that between Adam and myself, we've communicated with Beth Bowles, who are at Iowa Economic Development Authority several times, encouraging them to restructure their list to be organized by city. They have represented to us that they plan to do that. They are just waiting to get that organized until their program is fully closed, which I understand they're close to doing. So we've been trying to monitor it as closely as we can. The hard part is the folks that are doing business as a particular name, might have a corporate structure that's not recognizable to us. So I think we've, between Adam and myself, we've identified that half a dozen or so businesses that did receive it and will continue to gather that information and be happy to share what we learn as soon as it becomes available. For any member of the council, the IEVA is posting all of those on their website and I'd be happy to forward through Adam the link if you wanted to take a quick look for yourself. Thank you.
Other questions on that?
I'd like to go over the plans for reopening city facilities, but before I do that, just want to see if there's any other staff comments on any other items or issues that you'd like to bring up this evening? Okay. This afternoon, we sent to the council the plans for reopening our city facilities and it's, it's, it's broken down into different phases, but the phases aren't necessarily lined up across the city as far as dates, because there are some instances where we don't know the exact date that the transition is going to take place, but, but it does give you a good idea of how we plan on phasing each different area of our community in getting back to businesses as was, was normal or is normal, I guess, whatever the new normal is. And so we sent that to you this afternoon. Cindy's got it up on the screen right now, but just to let you know, you know, where we are, just as a real quick overview, as far as city hall and administration, we're beginning May 11. As far as City Hall and administration, we're beginning May 25th, which is a week from now, we're going to begin transitioning our remote workers back to City Hall, and we'll continue to, and still encourage people to pay by utility, their utilities online and by the Dropbox and other methods to do that. Our second phase, if you go down the box there, June 8th, we plan on opening City Hall to the public by appointment. So people that want to meet with people within City Hall, they can make an appointment, and we will make sure we follow appropriate guidelines to meet with folks. We'll continue to have our council meetings electronically at that point in time. And then if you look at Phase 3, City Hall will be open to the public and meetings will resume. And so we're working on what that looks like, how we make sure that we provide the necessary protections to make sure our staff is safe and the people that visit City Hall are safe as well. So there's a lot of sort of background information that supports this, but I think the more important thing right now is to show the council and the public that we are, have some plans on how we're going to reopen. The sort of related to City Hall, Community Development is located in this building. So you see under Phase 1, we'll be bringing back the building inspectors, staff to full time, and end our split shift that we've been operating under. Phase 2, we bring back the rest of the staff working at home. And then Phase 3, resume normal inspection practices and rental and housing inspections. So that gives you a quick overview of how we anticipate bringing City Hall back and Community Development back up to operations. Public Works, May 11th, Public Works. We, or we were said, as of May 11th, the Public Works remained closed to the public, but we were handling everything as we could without having in-person meetings and encouraging people to use different methods to communicate with us. June 1st, our transition is to get back to 100% staffing of our Public Works department. We'll still encourage people to do permits and licenses online, but the building would be, will be reopened, and a lot of our guidance we're getting from what the governor is telling us to do. The Police Department, Public Safety Building remains open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:00. Some of the staff continue to work remotely. By May 24th, the plan is to have 100% in-house staffing for all the divisions within the Police Department. So you can look at the Fire Department. A lot of that relates to, since our firefighters work multiple days, opportunities for family members to visit our employees. In beginning June 1st, we would allow family members to visit with temperature monitoring and masks would be required. July 1st, non-family station visitors with temperature screening and masks. And then August 1, the intent would be to have the station open for visitors and the public, and still following the guidance we're getting from Iowa Department of Health and Polk County Health. Parks and Recreation, we intend for our full-time staff to return from the rotating schedules May 26th. And then we're still have, there's a lot of guidance still out there or recommendations related to parks, buildings, and shelters, play equipment, and those kinds of things. And we don't really have a definitive plan on when those dates where we would reopen those facilities. We are getting our plans together of how we keep the facilities disinfected as we have different use of the facilities, but we're still waiting for additional direction on that and when we open those facilities plus the playgrounds, which would be Phase 3 under the park plan. And then the library, we did share this with the council at the last meeting, but beginning today, they started accepting returns from book drops. Beginning, we don't have a date yet, but their Phase 2 would be curbside pickup with the 20-item limit, and then also curbside pickup of tax form and print jobs. Their Phase 3 is allowing computer use by appointments, 30-minute time limit for patrons at a time. So you can see how the phased approach is we allow more and more people to have access to the library and the facilities there. Their fourth phase includes pickup of shelf checkout, one person per pickup. And so there's still some guidance that we'll have related to that. And then their Phase 5 would be back to normal operations. So this is a quick go-through of our thought process for reopening all of our facilities. We're going to do things as we feel comfortable, as our citizens feel comfortable making sure that we're going to be as safe as possible as each of these facilities roll into getting back to more normal operations as well as normal interactions with the public. At this point, I think, you know, we would be planning on having still the next two council meetings being done remotely, and then with the intent probably beginning with our meetings in July where we would actually, and again, we need to assess that as we get closer to that point, but that's when we would anticipate our first meeting going back to the city council chambers. But again, no real timeline on that. We just need to see how things play out over the next several weeks. So we wanted to share this with the council tonight to just give you some feedback on our thinking, and we'd be open to any questions you may have. I know we threw this at you sort of late today, but it's a process that is continuing to be refined as we go forward and figure out what is going to be the best and the safest way to be able to move back to serving the public. I will say, up to this point, we are not aware of any major concerns or issues that we have had over the last seven or eight weeks. I'm really proud of our staff and our department heads and how they've responded to making sure our staff are protected, our staff are safe, making sure the public is protected and safe. So I'm not aware of any major issues. I think even folks that have been working at home have been really responsive to our citizens, and hopefully, most of these efforts have been seamless to our public so that they know that we are continuing to provide service and know that we are, do have a plan and are going to start implementing how we get back to a more normal service situation going forward.
Well, Jim, I want to give my personal thanks to you and the entire staff for everything that you've done to ensure that services continue to be delivered to our, to the residents here in Johnston and others. It just appears that, you know, even though we know that some people are working from home and some people are rotating in and out, and, you know, from the public's perspective, things are getting done. So kudos to all of you. You're doing an outstanding job. I have just a couple of questions. One, and again, I know that you're coordinating with, you know, other levels of government and with other communities in the metro area. Just what's the status of the senior congregant meals? Do we know?
You know, John, have you asked that question directly yet from Polk County? I know Polk County has announced that they're going to not open their facilities till July, the first part of July.
What we have been told is at the very earliest, July 1st. But they will, they will look at recommendations come probably sometime the first to middle part of June and revise that if necessary.
They're obviously a very vulnerable population, so I knew that you were, you were working with them, just, it was, it was just a question out of curiosity. And then, Jim, you indicated that, I thought when I looked at this chart, we would be having in-person meetings again the end of June.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, but our council meetings in June are the first and the 15th. So we have on here the 22nd as being...
Oh, okay.
When we start with our public meetings to resume, which means that would be the first meeting in July. So it's just a timing of when our meetings are. But, you know, we anticipate, you know, probably latter part of June, some of our committee meetings that have been happening online may be transitioned back to in-person meetings, obviously with the social distancing and, you know, making sure that we're able to disinfect and follow all those protocols.
Right, right. So will we have a list of protocols that we'll be able to post and provide to the public when they attend those meetings, or even for our officials that attend those meetings in terms of, you know, social distancing and use of facial mask if they, if they want to do that, temperature, you know, stay away if you're sick, those sorts of things?
Yes, we'll certainly have guidelines that we'll be able to post, you know, online as well as on our facilities, giving people direction on all those issues.
Great. Other questions or comments for Jim?
Jim, I had a question about what you were just talking about with the mayor. Do you have protocols for staff as they return to City Hall and to Public Works? Like spacing of desks? How many people in a room are you asking them if they're in the building to wear masks? Have you talked out these kind of issues?
We have, and I'll just explain a few of them, and any department head that wants to chime in, feel free to do. But, for example, on our Parks and Public Works staff, we're encouraged, we will have our staff as whenever possible, only one person to a vehicle rather than having multiple people in a vehicle when they're going to a job site. So you may see a few extra trucks out in the road, but that's just for safety reason. We're, we're going to have, you know, in City Hall, our staff is pretty much segregated from the standpoint that most of our folks either have an office or are more than six feet away from other people. The ones that were really, are two reception people up front and utility clerks. Those are the two that we've talked about. We may need to do something more to make sure that there's more distancing there, but we're also talking about what our protocols are as far as how often do we want to sweep the building and go in and disinfect doorknobs and all those kinds of things. We haven't, don't really have a, we're thinking about what those protocols are. I can't say we have the exact what that's going to look like. As far as our meeting rooms, we're going to not invite the public into our smaller conference spaces at this point. We have one on the City Hall side, one on the Community Development side. Our plan is to meet in the back of the council chambers where we have plenty of room. We can place as many tables up as we want. We can make sure we have plenty of distancing. The plan would be to disinfect the room before the meeting, have the meeting, and disinfect the room after the meeting, and that would include staff meetings as well as meetings that we might have with the public. So we've got a lot of those protocols that we're working out. We don't really have the fine details. I mean, one change we had at City Hall, we put Plexiglas up in front of the counter for the utility billing clerk, and so we've done some things that will help assure that we keep people as safe as possible. But, you know, we do have quite a few protocols that we will make sure we have in place and communicate that with everybody.
Are we going to request the public that enters the building to wear masks?
I don't think that we have that defined, totally defined at this point. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that we can, we can consider. I think a lot of people are wearing masks already. Now, the question is, do we make that a requirement? And I don't think we have that quite answered yet.
I think we need to discuss some of these things, and also, I would be concerned, even with people in a building where you have spacing, you still have air recirculating, and, you know, no matter how much you're doing spacing, if the same air is being recirculating around you, you're not protecting yourself. But I appreciate that you're working on it. I have one more question.
We are going to have masks available for all of our staff, so we do have that. And we've talked about whether we have some disposable masks available, like, for example, at council meetings, we are going to have some masks available for the city council members as well.
I think you're just going to have to figure out, though, are you going to require masks within the building unless someone is sitting at their desk? But at any time that they're standing up, because you can't be six feet apart if you're passing each other in a narrow corridor, et cetera. My other question would be, if you had an employee staff that felt uncomfortable returning to work on this schedule because perhaps they have underlying health issues we don't know about, are you talking about making accommodations?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind sharing, Jim. In fact, Councilwoman Martin, I just asked Jim that this afternoon. I stopped in there with my mask on, and I asked him what he thought I should be doing. I think, I assume, you know, maybe you don't know, but I have lupus, and so I have a very compromised immune system, which is why I've been at home and in there on the weekends or nights or when no one is in there. I hadn't thought about the air circulation problem until you just mentioned that. So I'll give you something else to worry about, thanks. Anyway, I do have a mask, and if I need to go in there, I'd wear my mask. But I asked Jim what we're going to do, and he said, we're going to, we're going to do what the governor and what everybody else has been telling us to do, which is people need to just take care of themselves. And as long as I'm doing my work, which he knows I've been doing, and I've been getting my stuff in, and I'm participating in the meetings, and I'm, and I'm here, I'm working more hours from home than I've been when I'm at the office, quite frankly. We're just going to keep going until I'm comfortable, basically. And we kind of have that same issue with some families and children and daycares. Daycares are only taking so many kids back. And so if we've had staff that have been able to do their job at home because their daycare hasn't been able to take the kids, are we going to force them to come back right away? So we're going to have to be making those kind of conversations and discussions and decisions ongoing. We're not going to make someone try to find a new babysitter or do something like that while this is all still out there, I guess. You know, we're going to, we're going to work with them as long as people are getting their work done. We know if they're not getting their work done, quite frankly. We're too small a group. If we're not getting our work done, somebody's going to know it. So that's where we're at.
I really appreciate hearing all that, and I appreciate your situation, Teresa. It's possible you may have a few people that their job is to deal with the public. I'm just hoping that we will, as a city, still do all we can to accommodate anyone's concerns.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I also appreciate this timeline that you've given us. It's tremendous, and I'm happy to see that it's, I was a little afraid it was going to be a turnaround and a rapid opening. I was especially afraid of what I would see for the library, and what I see here is pretty thoughtful. I totally appreciate it, and, yeah, continue to keep us informed. That would be great.
Well, appreciate those comments, and kudos to the department heads. They worked on this, and as we mentioned at council meeting, last council meeting, is that all of our department heads are communicating with their colleagues across the metro. And so, you know, you'll see some consistency with this, but we also have to, you know, make sure it fits with our facilities and our staffing levels and so, but the department heads have been very thoughtful in how we try to reopen our facilities and make sure everybody's safe.
Other comments or questions?
I think on the issue of masks, I think we should strongly encourage people to wear masks in our, in our buildings. I'm not sure we have to go all the way to the point of requiring that, because I think then, once you start to require it, you start to have to deal with how you enforce it. I do think if we strongly encourage it, I do think that my senses around, at locations or places I've been in the Johnston area or nearby, there's a high propensity of people wearing masks. I think by strongly encouraging the people to do it, that that should be sufficient.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions, suggestions? Again, thanks to everyone for a great job that you're... Again, thanks to everyone for a great job that you're doing, you know, just on a data basis, as well as your planning for how we move forward from, from this point. So appreciate everybody's efforts. Anything else, Jim?
That's all I had this evening.
Well, let's go to council comments then. Councilman Coke?
I have none.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have no comments. Thanks.
Cindy keeps moving you people around on my screen.
I'm not moving them. They're just moving. Not me.
Councilman, ready?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for all the staff that have been doing a great job doing this pandemic. Cities, recreation, Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job.
Thank you for the donuts, Suresh.
Donuts?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, Councilman Soraka?
Hey, just one. I had a constituent who reached out to me and wrote, "I have been emailing with Eric, the director of the library. I sent him a list of LGBTQ plus books. I was hoping they could add to the collection. He said they'd be purchasing the books I recommended and that the library has submitted their list already. This means so much. Please share my appreciation with him when you see him next." So big thank you to Eric and all the staff at the library.
Very good. And Councilman Evans?
Nothing.
Okay. And I don't think I have anything to add for the good of the cause either, so. With that, if there's anything, is there anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
You bet. Good night.